That's what Rambo is going to talk about.
Yes.
Appreciate your attendance. We'll start with the indication. Councilor Bruce?
Let's pray. Father, we pause to thank you for this mid-September, very hot day. I thank you for the group that's here, elected officials, as well as people from our community. I just ask, as we look at the agenda for this evening, we have humble hearts and sharp minds. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Let the leaves and students live in the United States of America and in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Let's, we've got a busy night tonight. Let's start with the approval of the minutes from September 4th. Presenting, the board pack, are there any corrections or is there a motion approved that was presented?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? All right. Let's move to reports. Oral communications. Tonight, we're going to start off with Jeff Ralph. Rambo is going to do a discussion of the cost of service study. A week ago, we've got a council committee for the rate study. Jack Welheim, Cindy Dodens, and Jerry Frush. And again, we met a week ago to review the final draft of the cost of service study. We had met previously on August 10th to get a little bit of input into that study. Tonight, Jeff Rambo will preview the draft and also, as he will explain, the updated cost of service study will examine the actual costs to provide service and project rates to support debt service for collection system upgrades and plant capacity increase. I've just provided the other four members of the council with the draft copy of the cost of service study. They have not seen it yet. Again, we've had this cost of service study as a draft for one week. After reviewing the cost of service study, I would ask any council members that have questions or concerns to directly address those to the committee members, and that's Jack, Cindy, and Jerry. And then after the construction bids are received somewhere in mid-October, when the rates are finalized, the final report will be made available. In the interim, after the full council has had a chance to review and give their feedback, I will make available the draft study. But I would just remind you that those numbers are still preliminary and do not represent the recommendations of the rate study committee until they're finalized, when the bids come in. So Jeff's got a presentation. He's going to dive into the cost of service study. So without further ado, Jeff.
Mayor, council, good evening. See if we can get this set up on the screen. So we'll hopefully, oh, there we go, as it warms up. As the mayor mentioned, we wanted to provide an update for the council this evening with respect to the project and also talk a little bit about the cost of service approach in terms of draft, in terms of rate methodology. So like, what I'd like to cover is just kind of to start off, update everyone in terms of the project timeline, and then update, share some new information with respect to the bond financing through the state revolving fund loan program. And then finally, talk a little bit about the estimated rate impact of the new project, the Phase Two project on an across-the-board basis, and then on a cost-of-service basis. So in terms of the bond financing calendar, and this is sort of hard to read here, so I'm going to turn and read it myself. Randy Rumpola, who's here this evening, helped in updating the financing timeline in an effort to establish the steps and timing required to be able to close with the SRF program before the end of the year. So as part of the program, the city was ranked and scored, the project was ranked and scored July 1st by the SRF. So any of those communities that fall within the fundable range, which the city does, we need to have the project bid and close by the end of the year in order to secure that financing. So this bond financing calendar looks to accomplish that. First step, August 16th, was when the preliminary engineering report was approved by SRF. From there, week, the week of September 17th, and actually, I got an email today that this date is going to be pushed back likely to the first week of October, but that is, the SRF program will be issuing what they call a pool financing. And what that is, is when, well, let me just say, the SRF program only has a certain amount of funding, traditional funding available at the subsidized low-interest rate. And for, based on the number of projects that are out there, they will fund up to $25 million with the traditional loan money at the 2% or 2.25%. The balance, anything above that, would have to be funded through the SRF pool financing. And so what the SRF does is the state goes out, sells one large bond issue, and asks those communities that are participating to share in that one large bond issue. So in this case, the city's portion would be somewhere around $6.5 or $6.7 million. And so the city would participate in that state bond issue. So the state is expecting to sell that bond around the first week or second week of October. So roughly, $6.5 million will come from the pool loan. The balance, which is around $25 million, will come from the traditional financing piece. On October 11th, it's expected that the city will receive construction bids. From there, the council will have a first reading on the bond ordinance authorizing the borrowing through the SRF program, expected to be around October 15th. On October 19th, the Board of Works will be meeting to consider a ward of the construction bids, subject to completion of the financing. And by the way, these dates may move a day or two. These are just estimates at this point. November 5th, the meeting of the county council to adopt the bond ordinance and conduct the first reading on the rate ordinance. From there, around November 19th, the council will conduct a rate hearing for the adoption of the rate ordinance. Following the adoption of the rate ordinance, we have a tentative pre-closing date with SRF, which would be November 29th, and then a actual bond closing on December 13th with notice to proceed around December 17th. So just want to give everyone a sense of the steps that are going to be required and the rough timing timetable for those steps. So obviously, this would accomplish the closing of the bonds before the end of the year. So in terms of the Phase Two wastewater treatment plant expansion project, this is an estimate of what the project will cost and ultimately what the financing will be. In terms of construction costs, the engineer's estimates are just over $25 million. Non-construction costs are over, just over $4.9 million for a total project of $30,551. So ultimately, the final financing will be based upon the bids, which obviously, we don't know that yet, but these are the parameters that we're working with with respect to the calculation of rates at this point in time. So this is an illustration of what the proposed structure might be for the proposed bonds, and then also the annual debt service on all of the outstanding bonds. So the proposed bonds, a couple of things I just wanted to point out here is that you'll notice the outstanding bonds, starting in 2019 through 2024 or into 2025, you'll see debt service decreasing over that time. And the reason for that is there are several bond issues that will be rolling off and be fully paid during the next five or so years. So we wanted to acknowledge that, and within the structure for the new bonds, we wanted to try to minimize the overall rate impact as much as we could. So what we've done is we've, the way we've structured the proposed bonds in that middle column is that we've delayed some of the principal payments for the first five years, and we've delayed some of those payments to roll on, starting in 2024. So you'll see an increase there in terms of the debt service going from $838 up to $1.3 million. So by doing that, what we're able to do is minimize the total debt service payments over what we call this transition period. Transition period meaning we have several bond issues rolling off, and we also have the new treatment plant coming online, being constructed and coming online during that period. So from a rate perspective, what we wanted to focus on is not necessarily the short term, the next four or five years, but we wanted to focus on what the combined debt service payments would be over the balance of the proposed bond. So the remaining 17 years that you see there, where we have annual debt service of around $2.84 million. So for purposes of the rates, what we're focusing on is that 17-year period as opposed to the next short-term, four- or five-year period. So if you recall, in 2017 and even before then, 2008, the approach in terms of establishing a rate structure was based on what we call an across-the-board basis. And what that entails is simply taking the projected costs of the utility, comparing that to the existing revenue stream of the utility. That results in a percentage, overall percentage increase, and that percentage then is just applied to all of the rates and charges that the customer pays. So everyone, from a percentage basis, assuming that they use the same amount of flow, would see approximately the same amount of percentage increase. So based on the projected costs and the $30 million wastewater treatment plant project, we're estimating an increase over the existing rates and charges of right around 20%. Just to kind of compare and contrast to what we, and we'll cover this more here in a minute, but if you recall last year, about a year and a half ago, the estimate for the Phase One project for the collection system and Phase Two wastewater treatment plant on an across-the-board basis was around 39%. So with the first phase that was enacted last year, we started out at a 20%, but if you recall, then there were certain changes to that rate structure, which, two things primarily. One was that the city converted from a flat domestic rate to a flow rate. So that actually has a result of reducing the amount of revenue that would be coming in based upon actual flow data that we've received. The other primary change was going from a, was eliminating the administrative charge that all the customers paid within their base rate. So with those two factors, that actually results in a, not a reduction in overall revenue, but the city would not be collecting the full 20% of the Phase One increase because of those changes. So now what we're seeing, taking all those changes into account, this Phase Two, we're looking at an additional 20%, which is actually better than what we originally estimated with the total 39% in the two changes that were made to the billing structure. So overall, I think what we'll be seeing, assuming that bids come in close to engineer's estimates, that we're going to be within that original estimate in terms of total rate impact. So that was the cost-of-service approach. Want to transition now to the, what we call a cost-of-service approach. And for those of you that have been around, that were around back in 2005, you may recall, this may sound familiar, but that was the last time that the city went through a cost-of-service study. So at that point, the city reestablished its rate structure. And since then, 2008 and then 2017, any increases have been passed on through the across-the-board percentage basis. So first of all, what is cost of service? I'll give you sort of the technical definition, but it's the process of identifying service characteristics of the utility customers. So you have different types of classes. You have domestic, non-domestic, wholesale customers, commercial within the non-domestic. So you have all these different types of customer bases, so that the, it involves the process of identifying the service characteristics of each customer class, and then distributing those costs in proportion to those service demands. So really, what it is, in short, is we're resetting the rate structure, looking at the demands of each customer class and the cost, and we're allocating those costs to align with the demands of each individual customer class. So this is really critical to establishing rates that are equitable among user classes. So why would we suggest going through that type of approach now? Well, there's been quite a few changes since 2005. So whenever you have significant changes either in your system or in your costs, so the cost drivers, or changes in usage characteristics, that generally is a reason or a driving factor for resetting your rates on a cost-of-service basis. So what we've seen since 2005 is, we've seen a consolidation of both wastewater treatment plants, which is a pretty significant change within the system. We've continued to see customer growth every year. Last year, as you're well aware, the city went through a pretty significant collection system improvement project, still going through it, but in terms of the borrowing, that happened in 2017, so that was about $10 million. The city's pursuing the $30 million wastewater treatment plant expansion, closing this year and then constructing next year. As I mentioned earlier, the city has also gone through the conversion from, for domestic rates, going from a flat rate to meter rates. And then we also had the elimination of the administrative charge. So with all of these significant changes going on, we felt those were significant enough that it made sense to take a step back, look at the city's existing rate structure, and reset the rates based on cost of service. So I want to just share this illustration in terms of how, what we mean when we're talking about allocating costs. There are three primary cost components or cost functions. Those are the day-to-day operating and maintenance costs of the system. We have capital replacement costs that are things such as asset renewals, treatment plan expansion, those types of things. Ongoing equipment replacement, those depreciable-type assets that the city incurs on an annual basis. We also have the debt service costs, which is self-explanatory. That is the repayment of the outstanding bonds and then the proposed bonds that we've talked about here tonight. So then what we do is take those different cost components, and then we allocate them by function. And the three primary functions are treatment, which relates to the wastewater treatment plants, the collection system, which conveys the sewage to the treatment plant, and then overhead or administrative costs. So when we go through that allocation process, then we come up with two primary components to the rate structure, and this is not new. You currently have a base charge, and the purpose of the base charge is to collect costs that are associated with the collection system. It's also commonly thought of as the majority of your fixed costs. And then we have a flow charge or volume charge, which recovers the costs associated with treating the sewage. And those are commonly referred to as variable costs. So essentially, what we do then is we go back to those cost components, you know, starting with the administrative costs, since we've eliminated that administrative portion of the bill, through a cost-of-service process, we look at allocating those costs, well, we identify them first of all, and then we allocate them to treatment and to collection system on a prorata basis. From there, we end up with two cost components. We have the treatment, which then results in a flow charge, and then we have collection system, which results in the base charge. So a little bit about how we go through that calculation in terms of calculating a base charge versus a flow charge, and this is, these slides are probably somewhat oversimplified, certainly more calculations that go into these, but just to illustrate roughly how we come up with that. The collection system costs, when we come up with a total dollar amount for collection system costs, we divide those costs by the equivalent bills. And the way we come up with total equivalent bills of the system is we add up all of the different meter sizes within the system, and then we apply an equivalency ratio to those meter sizes. And these are based on the industry standards in terms of the capacity that can actually flow through a particular-sized meter. So we apply these equivalency ratios to the number of bills to come up with a total equivalent bill number. For the treatment billing determinant, we simply rely on billed flow or volume. So what we've done within the cost-of-service study, again, as I mentioned earlier, there have been some transition to go from flat rate to metered rate, so we've taken into account the loss in flow or the reduction in flow as a result of that. So all those different changes are incorporated into this billed flow number. So I just mentioned this, next step then would be to take the treatment costs, divide it by the billed flow, to get your volume metric rate, and then take the collection system costs divided by equivalent bills to come up with your base charge. So this would be an illustration of what that would look like, or the end result, if you will. Starting with the top set of numbers under the category of base charge, what we've done is we've taken all the collection system costs, whether it be operation and maintenance, asset renewal or capital replacement, and debt service, and we divided that by the total number of billing equivalents. So what we've come up with is an estimated base charge of $18.40. From there, we would apply those ratios based upon the meter capacity. So you'd see an escalating base charge that ties into the amount of capacity that can flow through each meter size. I'll just point out, to the far right, you'll see a column that says adjusted wholesale base charge. What that is, is historically, well, this represents the wholesale customer rates that they pay. And historically, the wholesale customers have not paid a base charge in paying to the collection system costs. Based on this version of the cost-of-service analysis, what it does is recognizes that even though they're a wholesale customer, they actually do tie into the city's collection system, and they do utilize a portion of the city's collection system. So, and again, in an effort to sort of reset the rates on cost of service, we calculated a percentage of collection system costs that would be attributed to serving the wholesale customers, and the rates that we've showed there are the estimates based on that percentage So from there, we add to the base charge, then the flow rate, or the flow portion of the bill. Like I said, we take the treatment costs, divide it by the flow, and you'll see down at the far right column under total flow charge, that for the city of Warsaw customers, every customer would pay $5.50 per 1,000 gallons. And you can see the breakdown there of what makes up that treatment rate. It's broken down by four different components. One is INI, which stands for inflow and infiltration. So inherently, there's always a, an amount of stormwater runoff or other things that infiltrate the system. And so what we try to do is isolate the amount of flow that is coming into the system that is eventually being treated, and the cost to treat that inflow and infiltration. So that, in terms of a rate, that estimate is about $0.45 per 1,000 gallons. And the reason why that is important, that we break that out, is that the existing wholesale customers do not participate in that portion of the rate. So they have their own collection systems. If they have INI in their system, they're essentially paying for it through the rate because they send that sewage on to the city. So they do not participate in the INI portion of the city's rate. The treatment user charge, $3.11. The purpose of that rate is to recover the, both the operation and maintenance costs and capital, annual capital costs that are related to treating the sewage. The treatment Warsaw debt service rate represents the portion of the debt service that only, that the city-only customers pay. So the wholesale customers do not pay the $1.39. And the reason why we break that out is when the wholesale customers connected into the system originally, they paid upfront their share of capacity contractually. So whatever we do, whenever the city does a wastewater treatment plant project, what we have to do is look at, okay, how much of that project relates to expansion or increasing capacity, and how much of it relates to just general improvements and upgrades of the facility? And so what we're able to do by doing that is breaking out a rate that is attributed to additional capacity versus just general improvements and upgrades at the plant. So the $1.39 represents So the $1.39 represents expansion-related treatment costs. The 55 cents, who everyone pays, is a reflection of the upgrades or improvements of the wastewater treatment plant. So the difference in the, what the wholesale customers pay, which is, or estimated to pay, $3.60 compared to the city customers of $5.50, the difference is the city customers are paying for the city's INI and also paying for the expansion of the treatment plant. Last thing I would point out here is there still are some cus, even though we've transitioned to a metered rate, there are customers that are sewer-only, and their usage is not being metered. So they would continue to pay a flat rate. However, we've reduced that flat rate from the previous estimated average flow, which was around 4,800 gallons, down to 4,000 gallons, which is based on actual flow data that we've received. So we reduced that flat rate assumption from 4,800 gallons down to 4,000 gallons. So those flat-rate customers under this estimated rate would be $40.40. All right. So this illustrates, next schedule ill, illustrates the transition in the, in the rate structure, starting with the 2008 rates that were in place, compared to the rates that are currently in place, the present rates, 2017, compared to the draft or estimated cost-of-service rates, which we had expect to go into effect somewhere around early 19. The, the two columns to the far right have really just kind of included for, really just to initiate a discussion on, and that is, you know, what, what we tend to recommend for utilities is to begin thinking more long-term, look beyond just the current costs, and really start thinking strategically about the, the method of increasing rates, small incremental increases more periodically. And the way we've seen that done is to, within the rate ordinance, enact a multi-phase rate increase over time. So we're not necessarily suggesting what that would be tonight, but just again, something to start thinking about, that, you know, the, the rates under the cost of service really just looks at, you know, existing costs. There isn't really a whole lot of inflation built in there, and of course, as we all know, we do see inflationary increases from year to year. We're starting to see that inflation rate creep up a little bit. So one way to help avoid from inflation eating into your cash reserves is to establish annual increases. So what we typically see is for utilities to look at, within the ordinance, establish annual increases for three to five years. I wouldn't suggest going beyond that, just because things change, and they can change substantially, so you don't want to necessarily get out ahead of yourself too far. But certainly looking at increasing rates in a two- or three-year phase period, I think makes good sense from a, from a business practice standpoint. So getting back to the first three columns, the dwelling unit, of course, in 2008, those cus, domestic customers were paying a flat rate based on the 4,800 gallons. That was 32.60. That current rate is 35.33. Under the cost-of-service approach, which that flat rate would be based on 4,000 gallons, would be $40.40. The volumetric charge, flow charge per 1,000 gallons in '08 is going from 4.71, jumped up to 5.65 currently. Under the cost-of-service approach, that flow charge would go down by 15 cents per 1,000 The base charge, 2008 rate started at $10. That went down to 8.21, in part as a result of the elimination of the administrative charge. Under the cost-of-service approach, the base charge would go up to $18.40. So what we're seeing here again is a recognition of the cost drivers of the utility changing, going back to that early schedule that we looked at, all those changes that have occurred. And what we're seeing is a shift from the flow charge or treatment rate to the, to the base charge. And down under number three, you can see the change in the wholesale customers' rates. Again, the flow rate, 2008 rates going from 3.47 per 1,000 up to 4.17, and then that rate going back down to 3.66 per 1,000. Then we've added the base charge for the wholesale users as well, so that would be a monthly, monthly base charge. So what does that mean in terms of monthly impact with regard to the bill? We've pulled together some examples just for illustrative purposes, but for the, starting with the residential class, again, we just touched on this, but the, what we like, like to kind of view this as, going back to the 2000 rates, because that's really when we started the Phase 1, Phase 2 projects, and that's really what we're focusing on here in terms of increases or decreases in the bill. Again, in 2008, domestic customers paying 32.60, currently paying 30.81 cents. That rate would go up to $40.40, which is a $7.80 increase. Again, that's based on a 4,000-gallon usage number. Pointing out the obvious here, but if, if customers tend to use more than the 4,000 gallons or less than the 4,000 gallons, obviously their, their percentage would be, would be So just progressing on here, duplex, we just assumed, just to look at a two-unit duplex, assuming they, they use 8,000 gallons. That bill would go from the 2008 rates going from $65.20 up to $80.80, so $15.60 increase per month. About the same as the residential in terms of percentages. For apartment complexes, we, we pulled out an actual example here, which had 145 equivalent dwelling units or apartment units. The actual flow for this complex was almost 280,000 gallons per month. So again, going back to 2008, this particular complex was paying just over $4,700. Under the proposed cost-of-service rate, this particular complex would pay just over 4,200. So they would actually see a, see a decrease compared to what they were paying back, starting in, with the 2008 rates. The, going on to non-residential or, or non-domestic, we looked at a, a one-inch meter. We also looked at a two-inch meter with the assumed flow there that you see. For both of those, we're seeing, for this non-residential, smaller meter size, less consumption, commercial usage customers, we're seeing a, a higher percentage in terms of, of what their rate impact would be. Again, it's just a, a result of the shift from the flow charge to the base charge. So if you're a customer that has very low flow, but you have a larger-than-5/8-inch meter, you're going to see, you're going to see a higher percentage in terms of dollar impact because your bill is more heavily weighted to the base charge versus the flow So the city's largest user, Zimmer Biomet, and this is, these are all the Zimmer Biomet meters combined. Back in 2008, they're paying about $58,000. Under the proposed rates, they'd pay around $70,000, which is about $11,000 increase, 16% on a percentage basis. And then finally, the wholesale customers, Winona Lake, historically, '08 rates paid Under the proposed rates, again, assuming the same amount of flow, they would pay $38,638. So marginal increase on the monthly basis, about 8%. Similar percentage on Leesburg, in terms of dollars, much less, but percentage-wise, about the same. So with that, again, just to, kind of a recap, in terms of the cost-of-service approach, we've, we've talked about some of the reasons why it would make sense, and we've, and we've discussed this with the rate committee as well. Still having those discussions, I think we've had good conversations and, and good questions along, along with those discussions. But in, in our opinion, recommendation would be to consider the cost-of-service approach, again, given all the substantial changes within the system. And overall, this result, in terms of overall rate impact, is still well within the original estimate that we talked about last year. So again, just to mention, these are still draft, still work in progress, but we wanted to share that information, kind of bring everyone up to speed in terms of where we're at this point. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions, and Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Yeah, as Jeff said, the rate study committee, we've met several times and worked through this. It's, it's essentially a truing up of, of our costs and, and realignment of the costs. And I know it's, it's certainly different than the cross-the-board increase. We found, obviously, with the cross-the-board increase last year and all the changes that were made, we knew we had to do this. So going back to, again, this was, all of our rates were predicated on that 2005 cost-of-service study, with all the changes that Jeff has mentioned and the committee has looked at. It made sense to start from scratch and re-true up all these costs. I won't put the committee on the spot, other than to just Jerry, Jack, and Cindy, if you just have any comments on the process and what your thoughts have been to this point with this draft.
It was rather tedious, I think, going through all the numbers for a while. I want to thank Jeff for, for explaining them really well. He answered our questions fully when it comes to, you know, how, just exactly how are we figuring out what the cost is going to be for each, each user? And made it, made it pretty clear as to, as to how this cost of service was, was put Still kind of poring over it and going through it, but it was, was well done.
Cindy, your thoughts?
Yes, I, I really appreciate the process, and especially the fact that we did the new cost-of-service study over the weekend. It, it always helps me to actually get some actual bills and actually plug in figures and everything. And I guess one thing I was a little concerned about on the multifamily units, last year, when we took away the billing charge for everyone, like if there's a fourplex or a sixplex, were they still all supposed to get like four times the 8.21 or six times the
They were supposed to get one, one billing fee, but yet each one of the units would get the conveyance fee, right?
Yeah, that's right. So each.
Jeff, would you come to your phone, please?
So, yeah, being under the city's definition of, of residential usage, they would pay. So for instance, an apartment complex would pay a base charge based on the number of units. And then on top of that, they would pay, the complex would pay the amount of, based on the amount of flow for the entire complex. So those two things combined would make up the, the total bill.
Okay, because well, I thought when we talked about it in committee, that the base rate for the 5/8s or 3/4s was per, per dwelling unit.
Right, correct.
But actually looking at some of the bills, it would appear that only one 8.21 charge was made on some of the fours and the sixes.
Well, we, we can certainly go back and, and take a look at that, see if there are...
Would lack of income affect the rate proposal? A lower amount of income than we actually could have?
Yeah, sure, yeah. So based on, you know, the, the total pie in terms of total cost, if we're, if the amount of revenue stream is being reduced, then that affects everyone's bill in terms of a slightly higher increase.
Well, I, I would appreciate that. I, I had people ask me about this recently, and, and I think we probably need to check the, the billing on the multi-units. I think we're not, on some of the units, we're possibly not billing that conveyance fee more than once. In the ordinance, I went back to look at the ordinance. The ordinance we passed was just to take care of the billing fee, not the conveyance fee. And I think we might want to look at that.
Just one more thing to add to that, if I can. So for purposes of the cost-of-service study, we've looked at the total number of units for each complex, and so that's what we've based these numbers on. So it does assume going forward, if that's not happening now, that it, that would be the fact going forward in the case.
And one comment I had, I look back at the 2005 study, the cost-of-service study, and it, it kind of had a real similar effect in that the rate classes, again, it wasn't an across-the-board increase. I know the wholesale customers took a big jump. Residential, I don't think was as great, but I, I, I want to get that 2005 cost-of-service study out that was predicated on the dwelling units and, and showed essentially the same type of differences in percentage increase back in 2005. And again, it's, it's trued up since then. So the cost-of-service study has that impact of, of re-truing up the rate classes, and the amounts aren't going to be the same. But they're all predicated, if, if a customer uses 2,000 gallons in an apartment or 2,000 gallons in a home, they pay the same amount. And that's the way the study is set up. It's, it's paid by the unit. And that's essentially the, the rate structure that the city has, has stuck with from that 2005 cost study and, and cost-of-service study. I'm not sure when the cost-of-service study was done before that.
2000?
We'd have to go back and look, but I know that that 2005 was, was in response to Winona Lake.
Winona came on.
Yeah, I, I think so, Winona came on, Mayor.
Well, right, but we've been doing cost-of-service studies pretty much, that's the way the rate structure's been set up. I, I know even back in the 70s when we looked at, there was a billable charge as far as the flow, and then there was, was the flat fee, so. And having been 13 years since the cost-of-service study was done, I, I think it's, it's important that we true that up and then move forward from that.
Jeff, you've done an incredible amount of work, and, and I'm impressed with your work. It's very good. I, I would really like to see if we have more income available to us that might affect the, the rates. I think we do.
Well, and that's the purpose for, starting with the draft, looking at the method, and we've got time, we've got time to do that. As, as you saw from the calendar, I think this isn't being proposed until, the actual vote won't occur until November, so we've got plenty of time. And that's the reason for getting this out early and getting this, this draft out to council members. But I would ask that you contact council members that are on the rate study committee if you've got concerns, and we'll take them back to Jeff, and, and we'll look to see if there's any, any adjustments that need to be made.
And I just have one quick question on the figures that we used. Was it like for the first six months? Did it include any period of time when we had the sprinkling credits in effect? Just so we kind of know what we're basing things on.
Yeah, good question. So what we did is we, yeah, we, we took the actual, we were able to take the actual flow data, and what we did is we looked at, within our analysis, we looked at all the domestic users and their usage patterns for the period of time that the sprinkling credit is in effect. We compared the usage during that period to the usage for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So with that information, we're able to... So with that information, we're able to calculate how much the reduction, the loss in revenue, loss in flow, and the loss in, resulting loss in revenue would be. So, yeah, we're actually able to calculate that, not only based on the six months, but based on a full year's worth of data.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have one. If the, and boy, I know this is all speculation, but if the Tippi sewer district comes in, right now, our new plant's calculated for twenty years, thirty years, lifetime? Will that affect that lifetime if they come in, since they'll probably be our biggest customer? No?
Well, the capacity, the new plant will certainly be able to handle that, and obviously, if we give more users, that could have an impact on the rate.
Yeah, so typically--
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah. So typically, you know, if you think about economies of scale, the more users and the more flow you have, then you can spread the cost over a wider range of customers and flow. So all of the things being equal, typically, that does result in, I'm not going to say reduction in the rate, but will help, will provide some additional revenue. Of course, the other side of it is, if you're treating more flow, there's going to potentially be more costs that the city incurs, but that's not typically a one-to-one relationship. It's usually the revenue outpaces what the additional costs are.
And they're going to have to make the decision which way they're going to go.
Sure.
And having the cost-of-service study, an updated cost-of-service study, you know, we know what it costs to treat sewage, and typically, that'll be an option for them, and they're going to have to make the decision whether they build, whether they go one way or whether they go the other.
I was just concerned that might shorten our lifespan of our plant.
When Wesler did the plant capacity and stretching it out, he included not only, or they included not only that possibility, but also what we're doing within the airport industrial park in those calculations. So their model was based on those being in that for that life cycle.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not been a question from the beginning. We knew we had the capacity, but that's not our decision. That's a decision that group is going to have to make. So obviously, there's more to come. I would suggest, you know, born through, cost-of-service study, the draft, again, we don't know that they'll change a lot based on how the bids come in, but, you know, who knows where that'll happen? So we won't finalize this until at least the middle of October, let me have a pretty good idea where we'll stand. But just to remind you, those percentage increases you saw were the overall increases for the two years, and they seemed, at least from the residential side, pretty well below what we had. We had estimated about thirty-eight percent over the two, and I think it was twenty-four percent on the draft initially, so. All right, anybody else before we move on?
Was the timeline in here for the debt service?
No, I'll get that out, because we just, that was revised, and it will probably continue to be revised a little bit. Randy, you might, do you have any comments on that? Because I know you're handling the bond as well as the rate ordinance.
I think, you know, just the one change, we had kind of an estimated date for the SRF pool financing to happen, that would change, but the balance of it is as good as it is right now. And as we move forward, we may move a week or two with meetings, et cetera, but right now, the only change would be the SRF pool financing timing, which doesn't really affect the council's timing.
I'll be sure and get the most revised timeline out to you guys.
Randy, while you're there, I want to make sure I understand correctly, that when we get the bids in, we're not committed to borrowing the six point seven if we don't need that much, is that correct?
Correct.
We have the twenty-five million that we know we're going to borrow, and then whatever comes in above that is what we would take from the pool, but we don't have to make any commitment until in December, when we actually know what the costs are, or how does that work?
Yeah, I would defer, Jeff, I think that is right, but--
So the way that the timing works for the pool program, they have, of course, their SRF is issuing debt for not just the city, but also the others, and for the SRF program to have those dollars in place and ready to go and be able to line up with the traditional funding, they are going out and actually issuing the debt. So the, now, are we tied in to exactly six point five million? What if the project comes in a little bit less? What if we only need five million instead of six and a half million? Had that conversation with SRF, posed that question. Their response was that we are flexible. Now, how flexible? They didn't give us a specific dollar amount or threshold, but they did indicate that they would work with the city. If you don't need the full six point five or six point seven, you may be able to scale that back now. And I didn't point this out earlier in the presentation, but I think it helps to understand how this will work. And that is, at the end of the day, the city's only going to borrow what they, what you need to borrow. So if the project comes out to be thirty million and we've issued, or the state has issued six and a half million for the pool fees, that doesn't mean you're issuing thirty million. What it means is, we would, they would take a little bit away from the twenty-five million dollar and shift some of that to the pool loan. So, and there is a slight difference, it's going to be a slight difference in the interest rate, but in either case, it doesn't mean that the city will not be borrowing more than what you need. You're going to borrow what you need. The difference might be a slight difference in the interest rate.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
All right, thank you. All right, Lynn. Lynn's presented the August fund report. Are there any questions on that? For your information? With no unfinished business, let's move into new business. We'll start with item one. This is the second reading of the Williams' annexation ordinance. Public hearing was held last meeting. I think you all approved the fiscal plan, so tonight, you're considering and actually voting on the annexation, voluntary annexation.
Yeah, this is the final step, obviously, after adoption of this ordinance. If the council approves it tonight, it'll get advertised and then recorded, and would take effect after that advertisement and recording. Like we had talked about before, the property would be brought in as R1, which would be residential in Council District Five. Those are kind of the two primary takeaways from the ordinance itself, it's setting that council district and the zoning of the property.
All right. Questions? Hearing notice, there are motion to approve ordinance 2018-09-01.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is closed.
Jerry, you were the second on that, correct? Okay, thanks.
Item number two, this is resolution 2018-09-02, approving lease between the Warsaw redevelopment authority and the City of Warsaw redevelopment commission. Jeremy?
Yeah, so you have two resolutions tonight that are focused on the same project we've discussed for the last couple of years. I'm going to let Randy talk about the resolutions, both of the leasing and the common councils' acceptance of the plant commission. I just want to talk a little bit, the last plant commission meeting, when they adopted theirs, they kind of asked me, how did we get to this point? And so I thought it might be a good idea to kind of refresh how we got from point A to point B. I know, obviously, you have been a little bit more involved in it over the last two years than they have, but back in 2005 was the first time industries out in that industrial park came to the city requesting sanitary sewer. In 2005, we didn't really have any means to get sanitary sewer to them. In that process, BioMet, or at that timeframe, BioMet was in the process of upgrading their sanitary sewer, and they abandoned their older force mainline. At that point, BioMet had, was willing to give us the old force main that they had used prior to the new one they installed around that same timeframe. In 2009, we did a study with Jones and Henry to see what it would cost to activate that line and at what, and the cost of activating it, what benefit it would be to the city, what could we service on that line. The study came back, which, with roughly a million dollars in cost to reactivate the line with not very much benefit and service, so we weren't going to be able to service very many customers with that line, and it was going to cost us a million dollars to do it. And fast forward three more years, we were looking at the Meyer project and trying to figure out how we could generate the revenue that, to develop or provide sanitary sewer to that industrial park. We created the Eastern Tiff district with the sole purpose of collecting those revenues, giving us a stream in which we could sewer that industrial park. From 2012 to this point in time, we've been working on those districts, the northern and the eastern Tiff district, to create the revenue and the ability to advance that sanitary sewer project. About two years ago, it started to look like we were in a position financially to take on this project and provide sanitary sewer to this underserved area. From 2017 to now, it's really been about completing that annexation process and completing the engineering of that infrastructure, so we get to the point today where we're looking at a lease rental revenue bond and then expansion of that Tiff district and combining both the eastern and the northern Tiff district into one Tiff district that would then be able to finance this project. So I'll let Randy talk a little bit about the lease revenue bond resolution, as well as the plant commission, and then Andy is here to talk a little bit about the bond itself.
So this resolution before you does approve a lease between the redevelopment authority and the redevelopment commission. The financing structure is using the lease primarily to benefit low interest rates, or to receive the benefit of low interest rates. With the lease financing, the redevelopment authority will issue bonds. Those bonds will be secured by lease rental payments that the redevelopment commission will make with respect to the project being financed, the sewer improvements and some related road improvements in that industrial park. The lease rental payments will be paid by the commission from Tiff revenues that are expected to be received in the northern area and the eastern area. The second resolution you have on your, the next resolution ever on your agenda deals with the consolidation, we can talk about that then, but, so the Tiff revenues will be used to pay the debt service on the bonds, and I'll let Andy talk about the structure, the Tiff structure. To be able to provide the best interest rate, the lowest interest rate possible on the bonds, there would be a tax backup in place, and it's the, that tax backup mechanism that leads us to using the redevelopment authority lease financing mechanism. I've said this, I think I said this at the redevelopment commission meeting, the, using the tax backup is like going to the bank and having, getting a mortgage. The more security you can provide for that mortgage, the better you will receive, the better interest rate you'll receive, the better credit you go in with, the better rate you'll receive. And so this is all about going to the bond market with a better credit than just the Tiff revenues themselves. And as Andy will show, certainly, we're not anticipating ever using that backup, we're just anticipating using the Tiff revenues. So the resolution before you approves the form of the lease, the bonds are not to exceed seven million dollars, the interest rate is not to exceed six percent, the lease itself is for a term not to exceed twenty-five years, with an annual rental of not to exceed eight-hundred-thousand dollars. I've used the term not to exceed a lot. The whole point is to move forward with an approval process with the parameters of the financing, the bonds and the lease, so that when the bonds are actually sold in the market, we would then be able to reduce the lease rental and reduce the lease term, so that the redevelopment commission will pay to the bond trustee on behalf of the authority that lease rental, only that lease rental necessary to pay the debt service on the bonds. Section two of the lease, I think it's the second paragraph in section two, has that language that would provide for the length, the rental and the term to be reduced to match the debt service on the bonds. The property or the improvements that would be leased would be the sewer improvements and the related road work that's done in connection with that. At a later point, we'll just have a very brief resolution before you to approve of a transfer of the interest in the road right-of-way to the redevelopment authority. So the redevelopment authority does technically have to lease something to the commission, and so we've done a lot of these road projects where the redevelopment authority has an interest in the road right-of-way from the city or the town, the municipality, and then the authority leases that interest, the completed improvements, to the redevelopment commission. At the end of the lease, all of that would go away, and certainly during the term of the lease, they still remain city streets. It's not as if the city can push any obligations off to the authority or the commission. It is really just a financing structure to be able to do the tax-backed Tiff revenue financing for the bonds, for why we do the lease. From a timing standpoint, we are going through the approval process now. Obviously, the redevelopment authority met earlier in September, as did the redevelopment commission, took initial actions to approve the lease, approve the financing. They were, are scheduled to meet later in the month, pending your approval for the lease and the financing itself. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we turn it over to Andy to talk more about the financing.
Questions?
Good evening. My name's Andy Mauser. I'm with Umba, and I work out of our Indianapolis office on our economic development team, but I work closely with Jeff and Todd Sims in both out of our Mishawaka office. We've put together a quick analysis for the financing of the sewer and road improvements in the industrial park, and then taken a look at your available eastern and northern Tiff revenues that would be available to pay debt service. Again, these are estimates. The plan is to sell bonds towards the end of October, early November, and then close yet this year. So interest rates within this report are still estimated, but we think this is a good conservative estimate, and certainly leaves a little bit of cushion for market movement, things like that, over the next couple of months. So I'll just kind of quickly walk through the report, starting on page two. Takes a look at the sources and uses of funds for the project. At about seven point three million dollars, construction costs for the sewer and road improvements. You would also be funding the debt service reserve fund, which is authorized in your resolution here this evening. And as Randy mentioned, with the bonds being paid from Tiff, but then back with that property tax, the rating agencies and investors will want to see that debt service reserve in place, and that's just extra money set aside in case those Tiff revenues were ever short in a year. That's a little extra security for bond purchasers and helps you achieve the highest bond rating and lowest interest rates. And then also, you can see the various financing costs. To total, a estimated issuance amount of about six point one million dollars. In your resolution this evening, you'd be approving a not-to-exceed amount of seven million, but we certainly anticipate that the actual amount to be issued would be less than that. And then the redevelopment commission does also anticipate contributing about two million dollars of cash on hand to help reduce the borrowing here for the project. Page three takes a look at the estimated bond amortization. Bonds would be issued with a twenty-five-year term, so final maturity in 2043, and you can see interest rates, again, and these are estimated as of the current market, but we do think that there is some cushion in the rates as well. Interest rates would range from about one point nine percent on the short six-month maturity, all the way up to about four point three percent on the twenty-five-year maturity, so your net interest cost over the twenty-five-year terms was around three point seven five percent fixed. And again, you'd be approving, as Randy mentioned, a maximum interest rate of six percent this evening, but we certainly think that interest rates will be much lower than that. So looking at the far-right column, you can see total debt service payments over the life of the bonds, around four hundred thousand dollars over the first eight or nine years, increases to a little over six hundred thousand, and then decreases in the later years, which I'll explain in a minute, just as some of your Tiff areas begin to expire in later years, the debt service comes down as those areas begin to roll off. And again, you'd get, approving a maximum lease rental of around eight hundred thousand-- And again, you'd get, approving a maximum lease rental of around $800,000, and you can see in the 2028, 2029 years, we're currently estimating that amount more in the $6, $700,000 range. So page four then takes a look at your Northern and Eastern TIF areas and then all the existing obligations outstanding from both of those areas. The Northern area currently generates right around $2.6 million annually, anticipated to increase over the next decade to about $2.8 million. And then as portions of the area begin to roll off, you can see that the Northern area TIF collections will decline until the area ends in 2037. Your Eastern area generates right around $400,000, and that'll be collected through the life of the bonds through 2042. So you can see total TIF revenues just under $3 million in 2018, the peak at about $3.2 million, and then start to decline as various portions of the area start to roll off. And then your outstanding obligations include the 2000 Medtronic bonds, the 2012 Commons bonds, the 2013 13A, and 2015 Winona PBD bonds, and then the $600,000 annual pledge to the outstanding sewage issuances. And talking with Jeff, the plan is to increase that $600,000 pledge currently goes through 2023. So we've discussed extending that pledge through 2029, which will help keep, keep rates in the range that Jeff presented earlier. So that's taken into account, and these schedules as well. And then you can see the 2018 bonds. So overall, your Northern and Eastern TIF together compared to all your outstanding obligations, including this new issuance, would be right around 200% coverage or two times your debt service, which leaves around a million and a half in the early years for additional projects and coverage above what your debt obligations are, protection against ever having to levy that property tax, as Randy mentioned. So trying to keep that right around 200% coverage, still very strong. And then I'll just quickly go through page five. This just shows the breakdown of those big streams, your Northern TIF area, real property, land and buildings. You can see the portion generated from your, from land and buildings within the area, and a portion of the area rolled off in 2029, and then another portion in 2032. Your Northern area was set up in 1999 with a 30-year life, was expanded in 2002 with a 30-year life, 2011 with a 25-year life, and 2012 with a 25-year life. So that, that explains where those roll-offs start to take place in those later years. And then from the Northern area, the personal property, industrial equipment from Medtronic and Winona PBD are both captured, and you can see the, the timeframes in which that equipment is captured. And then your Eastern area was set up in 2012 with a 25-year life, but that 25-year clock will start with the issuance of these bonds, so that allows TIF collections all the way through that final maturity. And then the, the following pages, I won't go through in detail, but it just shows the backup that flows through to these TIF streams, and the only growth that we've assumed in the TIF is from the roll-off of existing tax abatements. We have included a couple of the Meyer outlots, but those are very minor increases. So any new development within either your Northern area, within the existing Eastern area, or within the new expansion within the industrial park, that would all be on top of the numbers you see here, and that top, on top of that 200% coverage. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Randy, I assume that pretty much gives the detail on 2018-0902 with regards to financing. Is there a necessity to look at the expansion before we consider to, or can we do that?
You can do it as set on the agenda.
As, as it's set on the agenda, okay. So I'll turn it back to the council with regards to financing for the sewer and road improvements in the new airport industrial park. It's been explained. It's gone through Redevelopment, RDA, and Plan Commission, and it's here for your approval. Questions?
I guess as already mentioned in Plan Commission, we had a lot of questions, and wanted to be answered really well about when this would actually start, you know, like when, when the, when 25 years starts with the issuance of this bond, so that was important. We also looked at maps, which I don't know if we have maps attached to this tonight or not, but it, looking, if, if you look at the two existing districts, and there was like a gap in between them, and so what Plan Commission looked at was what's going on in those areas, and if we close that gap and make it one contiguous, you know, does that fit with what's going on in the area? And we agreed that it did. So it was approved unanimously through Plan then after those questions that we had. I don't know, Mike, if you have anything from Redevelopment?
I was not at the last Redevelopment meeting. Jeff was.
I was, but I have no comment. It's, it is what it is, and I appreciate your efforts to explain something that's very complex, to provide funding that's needed, low interest rate, and the ability then, the way this is set up to, to pay for it, so, thank you.
So just to follow up a little bit on Diane's question, so A plus B, and we have a little bit of C, so it is a little bit larger than the two combined, so there's some new area involved there, so. I know there's maps on here.
Yeah, and I was going to speak in the next resolution where we're actually consolidating, but, but just.
Yeah, I guess I did jump a little bit.
No, no, that's.
That's fine, that's good. I'm glad you pointed that out.
Yeah, there is sort of the existing Northern area, and then, as Jeremy said, there was the Eastern area that was created that was sort of adjacent to the park and to take advantage of the new development there. And frankly, I think when we first started talking about this, we talked about adding the airport industrial park to the Eastern area, just amending it and doing it that way. And we started, I think, in the mayor's office a year or so ago, looking at a map, what about if we just did a consolidated area? There's, there's benefits to doing that. Just the administration of the TIF areas, there continue to be, you know, new legislative requirements to provide reporting, et cetera. And so by consolidating it all into one area, as opposed to having two separate areas, it does ease the administrative burdens, plus it also provides for, I can't remember who set it up, but the ability to use the TIF revenues from the entire area in the entire area, so that who knows where development may occur. Presumably, the airport industrial park would be ripe for development once the new sewer is put in, and so we would expect some development to happen there. I would imagine the Northern area will continue to see development, and so to the extent you have projects that are landing in any portion of the area, you can use all of the TIF revenues in any portion of the area. So the, the two primary reasons for doing it.
All right, so further questions of either Jeremy or Andy or Randy? Right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2018-0902?
So moved.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. So let's move on to item number three, Resolution 2018-0903. Again, this is the expansion, consolidation, slightly, slight enlargement of the TIF District. Randy, you want to address that?
Sure. I stole some of my thunder, so I talked to you why we're doing the expansion, but from a procedural standpoint, what we're doing is technically, we are amending the Northern area to expand it, to include the airport industrial park, and then we are consolidating the Northern and the Eastern areas. So we'll, at the end of the declaratory resolution, we end up with one consolidated, and we've just referred to it as the Consolidated Northern Economic Development Area, which will now include the airport industrial park and the, the former Eastern TIF Economic Development Area. The process that we've been through thus far, the Redevelopment Commission on September 10th adopted the declaratory resolution to do all of that, and it, as Jeremy indicated, it was mentioned, it was that the Plan Commission did adopt its resolution, which by the language of the statute, is its written order approving of the declaratory resolution action by the Redevelopment Commission. The role of the council tonight, while it typically ends up being a discussion of the declaratory resolution and the purposes behind it, the technical provision in the statute is to provide for the council's approval of the written order of the Plan Commission. So if you look at the resolution before you, you may see some of that language, and that's why it's there, it's the statutory language. You're technically approving the written order of the Plan Commission, which approved the declaratory resolution. If you do act tonight, then the Redevelopment Commission will do a couple of things. We'll publish a notice in the newspaper, so there'll be a public hearing at a Redevelopment Commission meeting. Andy's firm will, Andy will prepare a tax impact statement with respect to the new TIF area being designated, which is the industrial park expansion area, and that'll go out to all of the overlapping taxing units so that, and they'll get notice of the hearing as well, so they'll have an opportunity to be at the Redevelopment Commission meeting to discuss that if they so choose. And so after that public hearing, the Redevelopment Commission would adopt a confirming resolution, and that would complete the process, and we'd make the necessary filings, working with Jeremy and Andy, and all of that would get taken care of. And so at that point then, you would have one consolidated Northern Economic Development Area, and as Andy mentioned, portions of those areas, because they are still their own allocation areas, the timing of when they roll off would be dependent upon when they were created and when the debt was issued, like with respect to the Eastern area that will have a 25-year life, beginning with this bond being issued now. But the older portions of the Northern area will just roll off at their normal time. We're not affecting anything with respect to that. So for that, happy to answer any questions.
Diane or Mike, any comments, or, I'm sorry, Jeff, with regards to Plan Commission discussion as I assume it passed?
Yes, both. Sat through both of them.
After we finally understood it.
Well?
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we pass Resolution 2018-0903.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
I will second that.
Further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Let's move on to an annexation that'll be far less impactful. I'm going to have Jeremy present this, and I will recuse myself from discussion. I've asked Diane to hold the public hearing and then to run the Resolution 2018-0904, so I'm out.
Okay, so this will begin the public hearing.
Yeah, so this is an advertised public hearing for the J. and J. Palmer property that was requested to be annexed last month. What you have, obviously, is the advertised public hearing tonight, and then you have a fiscal plan resolution and the fiscal plan, so we can hold the public hearing and then we'll discuss the fiscal plan.
Okay, so we'll start first with the council. Do you have any questions for Jeremy? I know this was introduced at the last meeting, and then do you have any questions? Okay, seeing no questions from the council, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the annexation? Is there anybody that is opposed to the annexation? Okay, then that will close the public hearing portion of that. There's no action for us to take tonight on this, that, the next action on the annexation will be after the advertisement, so I assume that we'll be able to be at the next meeting?
Yes, so I believe that should be on the ordinance, I think, is it October 1st? Set at the next meeting? Yeah, so that would be when the annexation ordinance would be brought back to you on October 1st for approval.
What we do need to take action on tonight then is the fiscal plan resolution, and I'll let you present that, Jeremy.
Yeah, so you do have the fiscal plan resolution, and much like the other ones we discussed, the, the big parts of the resolution are kind of outlining, outlining what happens to the property itself. So if you go to the fiscal plan of the first sheet, it talks about the zoning, so currently it's zoned commercial in the county, it would be brought in as C3 commercial, which is currently, is currently what the area surrounding it is zoned. The fiscal plan kind of goes through the different impacts. Because this is commercial property, you'll notice that in the, the taxing unit, impacts on other taxing units, there are none because commercial is taking out 3%, and our rate is under 3%, so the, the full tax would be taken in, so there are no impacts on existing tax units. When you switch, flip to the next page, it talks about the total assessed value, because this property is relatively small, considering, considering the city's total estimated assessed value, it'll have very little to no impact. If you look at street and police, there are no impacts because currently the street that this borders on is maintained by the city and serviced by the police and fire, so there's no impact in terms of cost on the service to the city. There will be an estimated levy increase on the property itself, so we would be generating or collecting more taxes than what we currently are. And that last summary of that impact gives you what the city would be collecting, which is roughly that first, 2020 would be a little over $3,700, and it, it's kind of rated out till 2022 at roughly $4,100.
Okay, does the council have any questions?
Jeremy, it is in District 1?
It's on the ordinance.
It does say District 1, and I'm just trying to look at the map.
Yeah, and I.
I know there's a line through there, but.
Yeah, I, I'll double-check that once before we do the ordinance final approval, but I, I believe I looked at that, and one of the things that comes up is it has to be contiguous, so if it jumps in and out, it would, still has to be contiguous to whatever district it's in, but I'll double-check to make sure.
I appreciate you checking.
On the ordinance.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so we will just be taking, is this just an initial vote then, Jeremy?
No, you'd be adopting, because this is a resolution, it's not two readings, you'd just be adopting the resolution of the written fiscal plan.
So if there are no other questions, can I have a motion regarding this resolution?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 2018-09-04.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, passes 7-0.
You'll, you'll sign that as presiding officer pro tempore.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Jack, did you make the motion, the second on that motion?
No, Ron did.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Something like that.
Okay, we'll move on to item six. This is, I hope you all had a chance to read through this. A lot of communities are being contacted by this individual to either write letters to our congressional delegation or actually pass a, a local resolution in opposition to the heavier, larger trucks that could potentially be approved, to not only be able to navigate our highways, but also our local roads. I talked to Mayor Daniel over in Columbia City, and their council settled on just writing some letters. I think there's a couple of letters in here that this individual had suggested. It does tend to make sense to me, given the impact that these heavier trucks and potentially longer trucks could have on the roads, but I wanted to just vet it with you all. We don't have to do anything tonight, but the information is there. I would kind of ask for some direction. We can certainly prepare a resolution if you feel compelled to do that. If, if you don't have any interest to, to handle this, I'm, I think it would be a good thing, but this isn't, this isn't really a priority. This was something that was issued to me from the outside, and, and I thought it'd be good to have some discussion if, if any of you feel the same way, or if you just don't feel that this isn't important for us to. this isn't important for us to consider.
Well, I know we just had two semis crash out here on 30, 1:30 this afternoon, and if we'd had bigger and longer ones, I, I can't see anything but more trouble.
The information that was passed along is that it would take these double 33s 250 feet to stop, which is 22 feet longer than the current 20 trailer that are out there. I mean, I think, given the impact of traffic volume and trucks on US 30, you know, these are just adding to that angst.
What I found interesting when I read through here was not so much the impact on the major highways, but I have a business on Market Street, and it's amazing how many trucks will, will turn off of 25 or 15 and somehow end up on Market Street, and I don't know how they're going to negotiate these corners, because they have a tough time now.
I'm not necessarily against doing something or constructing a letter, I guess I'd just like to have a little more time. Unfortunately, I didn't get it studied as much as I'd like.
Is this something being considered at the state level?
No.
No, no, this is just, I'm just bringing this to council to get your thoughts.
In fact, I contacted our two congressional offices and our senator and Farm Bureau, and there's nothing in the legislative popper right now, nor next year for it. It's really, it sounds great, and I agree with the premise, Jerry, but there's, there's nothing to do. This is a fight between the railroad and the trucking company. And the thing that's in Congress right now is only in appropriations, and they're fighting whether to open this DOT study again of 2015. Both sides use cherry pick quotes out of that study for their own benefit, but the bottom line of that DOT study said they needed more information. So I think, I wouldn't be able to vote one way or the other on this, I just need a lot, and again, there's nothing before Congress. So I have to commend the young man's doing this, but it's probably really premature.
Well, it's obviously coming from a special interest group. It raises a very important, critical issue, that whether or not there's any legislation being confirmed, it just gets you thinking about the impact out on our highways with the issues that we're having.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, the concept...
And that was the reason it was brought before us, and again, Columbia City debated it, and they, they took a form letter, just wanted our congressional delegation to know that we were, that they were, excuse me, opposed to this. So, but again, just more acting as, as a constituents voicing opposition, and certainly not wanting this on our local roads. But I'm, that's why I brought it to you all, and if you don't feel compelled to do anything, I'm fine with that.
One issue I have, as is presented, and I'm a perfectionist, I'll admit it, but the letters are very incorrect grammatically, and I would have trouble sending something like that representing our city. And so if we do do something, I think that we need to work on our own letter, I would definitely not send one of these.
No, these are just...
Yeah, I know they are, and I know that he'd like us to send them as they are, but I would be embarrassed to send this out, so I'm just voicing my opinion on that.
So do we need to do anything else with it? Does anybody else have any strong feelings either way? We can certainly let this ride, again, I don't have a...
I don't think, I don't think we, we would need to do anything about it currently, but if, I would be, would like to know if something got started and got, got moving at the federal level, to make sure, you know, timing of, of your, your opinions is sometimes, is sometimes the best thing. And to do it too early, it might get lost. If we don't keep track of when it, when it does come up, then our voice could get lost that way, too, so I guess vigilance.
Yeah, and I think US 30 Coalition, which we belong to, we've got transportation consultant, used to work for him, but I think what I'll do is I'll bet this with him, and find out the political implication of it.
I think that's...
And if there's any implication for US 3, if you seek funding, then I'll just report back to you guys at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Yeah, none of the congressional offices have any opinion on it, they do not have a stance on this, so there's nothing in the works.
I'll check with our consultant and just give a, get their opinion. So we don't need to do anything with that tonight. Finally, tonight, the salary ordinance will be distributed and a short explanation. Remember, it has to be adopted by November 1st. Similar to the study, social service study draft, this is, this is a draft, I would ask you all, after you've got the explanation, if you've got questions, Diane and Jeff are members of the Salary and Wage Committee, have worked hard on this with Jennifer, and I would just ask you to relay any concerns or questions to them, then as this comes up, just give you a chance to review it and get into the decision making of that committee. Jennifer?
This is just, no action, just for your information only at this point. Wanted to get it in your hands, so you can start reviewing it. As Mayor Tomer was talking about, we are going to present it in a proper ordinance form next council meeting, which is the first. Just to remind everybody that, one thing, for insurance, we asked department heads to budget for 15%, and we actually came in at 8.1, so that's a good thing. We also instructed department heads to increase the line item by 4%, and with that, we, as a wage committee, thought that 2% for all employees for the cost of living, and then 2% would be used for any alignments or any corrections, as we continue to kind of move forward. Okay? Just some quick changes for 2018 to 19 on the general ordinance. First of all, again, we just talked about the 4% increase, that is for positions, not what actually employees are going to be getting. We separated the assistant planner, and we created a new slot for senior planner, to give some difference between the assistant planner and the senior planner, that would be in Jeremy's department. We added back into the ordinance laboratory supervisor's position, we actually removed that several years ago, we didn't have a need for it at the time, but we believe that we're looking at having to add that. Also evaluating the assistant utility manager's position, so that's, that's on the spotlight, if you will. We reduced the cellphone allowance from $975 to $480 annually, and the employee contributions for medical insurance currently is 4.5%, but we are increasing that to 5% of the overall So one change that you'll notice also is that we separated out the police department, so now police salary ordinance is now going to be separate, before it was included in general, but now it's, now it's going to be separate. Same thing, we're just looking at the different positions, using the 4% to the budgets to align, to make corrections based upon the responsibilities and matrix. You'll notice that, and Chief Whitaker and I have been, we talked before I went on vacation, we talked again this morning, just adding back in the probationary position and a wage much lower than the base patrol officer, certified officer, if you will. He also asked that I evaluate the systems administrator and the mechanic's position, so that is on the table. And same with the salary, or I'm sorry, the cellphone allowance, we did reduce that from 975 to the 480, and of course, the medical contributions will mirror the 5% instead of 4.5. Fire department would be the last one that you have in front of you. Again, we separated out the probationary firefighter wage, so that somebody new coming in isn't compensated fully as a regular firefighter is currently. And the cellphone allowance, we reduced it, and also the premium for the 4.5 to the 5%. Again, this is just for you to review, just to kind of look at. If you have any questions, please reach out, either to me, or to Diane, or to Jeff, and we can certainly answer any of the questions that you might have. Elected official salary ordinance will not run until December, November, December, you don't have to take any action, so you don't even have a copy of that yet.
And again, what we see here is just the top end of what can be paid out.
That's the maximum amount that an individual can, a position can be compensated for, does not mean that that's what employees are going to make, not at all. We just, during the budget process, we needed someplace to start, so we said put 4% into your budgets, and we reflected the salary ordinance to meet that.
And those maximums now do include, I'll just remind you that, we look at social securities wage, what they anticipated, what they said their wage increase was, cost of living for last year at 2%, that's where we came up with the 2% initially, just to increase our base pay.
Correct.
So that there is a cost of living in there, and then over and over, we heard from department heads that they would like a way to look at their positions and have some way, so we're, we're looking at a range here, not a fixed amount. So in the past, we've gone with fixed amount for everybody, and haven't paid any attention to what the jobs are, or how they've changed, or what the situations are, and we've gotten away from that, and looked at actually what the fair market values are, and, you know, there's a lot of good work done with the wage committee before, so we were just tweaking, we didn't have a lot of tweaking to do, so I mean, the council should be proud that all the hard work that you've done, in general, it was, the tweaking we had to do, had to do with market rate for employment, rather than that we were way out of line with what we were paying, so...
One, one thing that, that we were able to do this year is we actually met with every department head. We called them in, and the three of us sat down and said, what are you hearing? What are you thinking? Where are we at? And very, very good, positive feedback, so I, I'm comfortable with it, we're, I think we did tremendous the last couple of years.
Jennifer, the committee have done a great job with the unemployment being so low and workforce being such at a premium wage inflation, it's created a challenging time, and the work you guys have done the last four or five years has got us to the point where we can make these adjustments and react as we need, as we have hiring issues. So again, this is just for your perusal, take a look at it. Any further questions?
And please ask questions ahead of time, even if you want to ask them publicly later in the meeting, you know, bring those to us, that we can get the information together for you, so that you're not, I mean, the whole purpose of doing this was to grant your request that you have this and plenty of time to look through it and ask questions, so please make sure you do.
I was just going to say, I very much appreciate getting this at a timely basis, and it's, it really reflects all the hard work over the last three, four years that this group and the wage committee and your department have done. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And one thing, the reason why it is late, it seems like every year, is because we do wait on a medical trust to do their renewals, and since that information is in the salary ordinance, we, it came in last Wednesday, so we've had three days.
Originally, it had been told it's going to be over 10%, and fortunately, it was 8.1%, which was the lowest in the trust pool this year.
But thanks to Jennifer's work, and I think my colleague, Mr. Gross, we had most of everything in place in June. We'd been able to meet with every department head, and we had everything ready to go, and just waiting to plug in these last numbers for you, so I feel that we're on the right track with getting this done in a timely manner, so...
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other items carried forward? Any comments, questions, visitors?
I would just like to relay a comment, and you may want to add to it, but we've had some work done on our street recently, and we want to commend the street department for their professionalism. We were dealing with stormwater back up, our weight, yes, stormwater back up into our street, and so our, we had some new stormwater pipe laid, and they've just been excellent in what they did, they were out there again today, my dog's getting used to them now, they're friends. But yeah, they, they just were very considerate of homeowners, kept the street open as much as they could, went door to door and talked to us, were always available for questions, it was just, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, it's good.
Yeah, you guys have had some work, yeah, in my district, there's been a lot of work done, because we, we're sitting right on the Two Lakes Center and Pike, and so there, we're getting a lot of things taken care of, so that's wonderful.
It's been a real busy time and a little bit of a challenging time, as the roads are opened up for this lining, I was just over on Main Street today, and they had to pull a structure, top off a structure, way down at that old brick area that they were going to have to line, and it was amazing when they start digging, what they get into, and unfortunately, there's, there's been things that aren't marked, there's things that are abandoned, but never, then not marked, but not abandoned. I commend our street department and utility for the hard work they do, they go above and beyond getting the markings and locates done, and still do the hand digs to try and maintain that safety, but sometimes, if something's not marked, it just, it doesn't matter. With fiber going in the ground and all the different utilities at different depths, and it's, it's quite a challenge, so...
And my final comment is just to remind everybody that the next meeting does start at 6:00 PM, so if you want to just put that ticker in your brain.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yep.
Yeah, it's October 1st, start at 6:00 PM.
October 1st, starts at 6:00 PM.
I want to thank the council several weeks ago, approving the year reduction efforts that started on the 15th, our public properties today. Remember, if you or any residents have questions, concerns, please contact me, and I'll do the best I can to provide answers for them. So thanks again for your support, and we've started this up once again.
Great. All right, anybody else? All right, your most, Mr. Jerry? So, second. Thank you. Don't run away.
Yeah, you have a light to sign.